November 3rd, 2025. City Council meeting is now called to order. Everyone please stand for our prayer. Mr. Blanks, where's Mr. Blanks? Can you lead us in prayer?
Oh shit.
Go on up, go on to the microphone.
Pretend I got called out forever.
It's okay, it's okay, I got it. Father in heaven, let us all bow our hairs, please. Father in heaven, we thank you for all the blessings that you provide for us. We thank you for the goodness, grace, and mercy. Thank you for this council, thank you for the mayor, thank you for the city of Inkster that's doing their job. Let them do their job and do it to the best of their ability. Continue to work with us, continue to watch over us, continue to give us safe travel and passage. We praise your name, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please continue standing for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Nolan.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Chisholm.
Present.
Councilwoman Rutledge.
Present.
Councilman Bishop.
Present.
Councilwoman Scott.
Present.
Councilwoman Howard.
Here.
Councilwoman Richardson.
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Everybody had a chance to look at the agenda? Nice and simple today.
Yes, it is.
Any additions, deletions? You have a motion to approve?
Some will second.
They probably moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Approved. We have no presentations tonight? Oh, women.
Oh.
Actually, yes, we do. Tonight, we don't have any items on the agenda, but I do want to have a brief discussion as a community regarding the cutting of the SNAP benefits and whether we want as a community to allocate some of our public funds that the government really doesn't have to help people eat if we, if this shutdown drags on for several more weeks. I think there was a court ruling, I think it was on Friday, a federal judge ordered the government to use the contingency money that is already there for emergencies. I think that'll cover about half of a month, is that right, Fred? Yeah, I think it was about half, so, but that would at least buy us a couple of weeks. But if this thing continues to drag on, we may have to assist folks in our community because, you know, it's the holidays and, you know, it's gonna hit some people pretty hard. So, I want to see what folks in the audience think, my colleagues on council. City Detroit, I think, just allocated 1.7 million for food banks in Detroit. The mayor has the authority in Detroit up to 1.7 million because their budget is so big. Here, I have the authority up to $5,000, that won't put a dent in it. So, we need to have a discussion as a community. Now, understand that the government normally doesn't provide food services, that's not something the government does. But do we want to do anything different, make an exception, or do we want to just support the food pantries and do it as a community and not as the government?
Well, that was my question, like, how would you go about, like, distributing the resources? Like, are we choosing specific pantries? Are we gonna kind of, like, partner with, like, gleaners? Like, what do we?
Well, we could do a couple, we could just make a donation to the pantries and they can buy the food. Or we could try to exercise what little power we have. I went to our new grocery store, Garden Farm, on Saturday, which, first of all, we're gonna do a ribbon cutting soon, so I want you all to go check it out. It took them a long time, but it's come together now, but they said they'd be willing to help us buy food on a wholesale level if we decide to do something. So, we could buy something directly ourselves, take it to the pantries from the giveaway, gleaners, mother's pantry, all the churches to give away food, or we could just make a financial donation and let them do all that. So, we have options. But is that something you think we should be doing? This is public money that is not budgeted for food, is budgeted for all these other things, and what are we willing to cut so we can do that?
Right. I think it to me that we should definitely do, but I think, like you said, we have to revisit the budget, where to cut, and how to do it, because, I mean, obviously, we should use city funds to support our citizens even when they need it the most, but, like, what does that look like? Because you've never, I've never, I mean, I'm 28, but like, I've never seen this before, so it's kind of like.
We've never been in this situation.
That looks like, yeah.
I mean, I thought on a smaller scale, you know, we do have a commercial kitchen in the rec center, but actually, the rec center is going on, going, be doing some renovations soon, so I don't.
Real soon.
Heard about you.
That's a whole nother conversation. But, you know, we do have a commercial kitchen, we could actually make some food for people who really don't have it, but they would still have to get to the rec center. You know, if we, you know, I don't want to say soup kitchen, but, you know, I know Detroit has soup kitchens downtown and stuff like that.
There are food distributions that are happening now within the city.
Yes.
Do we have those maybe advertised on the website? Are they, can we send them out in cold red?
Yeah, we send them out.
The types of things that we can?
And gleaners, I think even, most of the food pantries are still operating, but they're asking for donations.
I definitely think we should donate.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I was gonna say, you probably would want to sit down and talk to the Ministerial Alliance in Inkster, because our pastor gave us a charge yesterday for bringing in canned goods, give extra money for the month, and all the stuff, because we have a pantry at our church.
Oh, you do?
Yeah. You know, 90% of our church is Inkster.
Lot of, we can't.
Oh, 90% of my church is Inkster. I go to get Simmons, and our pastor was telling us to bring in canned goods and give extra money this month, you know, we do a Christmas dinner anyway, the second Saturday in December, the 13th. We have a church Christmas dinner, but trying to help our people in our mission fund, trying to help our people, because we know some people probably gonna get laid off during this time of the year, the government will open up pretty soon. So, that's why I say maybe we talk to the Ministerial Alliance and see what the church is doing too.
Oh, Mayor, maybe, maybe we can, maybe find a room within the city, and then maybe we can have our own pantry.
We could.
Maybe we can donate canned goods and, you know, dry goods, like pasta and those types of things, and then maybe we can give those things out ourselves.
Or we can take them to the pantry and let them give them.
Or we can take it to the pantry.
Since they already do.
Because he don't keep asking me if the city is still doing this. I know we, housing is still doing ours, I know you were doing yours at the rec, so if you can continue that at the rec, if that's gonna cover everything.
The turkey giveaway.
Well, that's gleaners, still on gleaners.
You know.
We're gonna continue that.
Cherry tree and all the others.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we, that, should we support them more than we already do though? Should, that's, that's really kind of what I'm asking. The Monday before Thanksgiving, we're gonna do our turkey giveaway along with the gleaners' food giveaway. So, not only will you get a turkey, you'll get a box of food in addition to the turkey, but that's only Thanksgiving week. I mean, we do that every year, but we're gonna try to double the numbers. I think we gave away 150 turkeys last year, we're gonna try to do 300 this year. But that's not coming from city money. Gleaners is doing their normal thing, plus we're throwing in the turkeys, mayor and council are throwing in the turkeys.
I did have a question. Do we actually have a listing of how many agency or organizations there are that distribute food? Do we have our own list?
I think, I've seen lists, but some of them go into Detroit too, as well as ours, but we can create, we, we know ours, we, we can name ours right now, we can create a list.
Yeah, how many is it?
At least four or five, right?
Eight.
Eight, is many people giving out food?
You got folk control, you got mother's pantry, the church on.
Womack, gleaners.
Gleaners.
Can we get that in writing though?
Forgotten Harvest.
Forgotten Harvest.
And we can put the.
Can we, can we form a flyer?
Yeah.
Can we do a flyer to let people know what's available now and when the distribution dates are?
Yeah, we can, we can do that.
Aren't you doing a newsletter or something too? Some type of newsletter, can't that information go in there?
Yeah.
To disseminate to people, that's what I was trying to say.
I just have a suggestion. I know that in the past meetings you guys have talked about, like, bringing back the block clubs and things like that, so I think within the city, we could have, like, a competition sort of, like, you know, get your, who's block is raising the most, or take your candidates to your favorite city service, like the police officers, the fire department, whatever, and, and just kind of make it a competition.
Well, anybody else who wants to speak, please come to the podium so we can get you on the mic, because we're recording. Huh? You need somebody to pick you up? Somebody pick her up.
My suggestion, Mayor and Council, would be to research this first, because there are so many different organizations, churches, that are here already doing the food giveaways, and if we don't research it, we're gonna overlap. And when you overlap, you know what that means. So, I think that it would do a little bit of research to, I do, our church did pass out yesterday a listing of, was it statewide or citywide? How was that?
Regionwide.
Regionwide. We have that list, if you want to, you know, use that list to even correspond with, and, and then, you know, you can come up with some favorable suggestions as to how, just how you want to go about doing that, because you, you just want to, you just don't want to overlap yourself. That's my suggestion.
Okay. Do you guys think we should use government money or just money out of our pocket?
That's the question.
It kind of depends how long this thing stretches out, too.
I was thinking, I think that's like.
That's gonna be the key factor.
I think that's my thing.
Is how long this is gonna last.
Because if we could, like, reach into our pockets during the holiday season and utilize, like, donations to get us through at least November into early December, then we'll be good, and then if it stretches longer, then as a government, we can, because like, right now, you're gonna be able to tap into the different giveaways and, like, you know, there's money, like, right now, like, I don't know, a lot of people are willing to donate, right? Because it's like the holiday season, but what happens in January and February if it goes that long, where, you know what I mean? So then, I feel like maybe we could consider that, and then we also have a better handle on how to spend it, where to spend it, and then we can do it that way. And then maybe we need to bring, like, all of the community pantry, like, leaders to the table and have a discussion, like, what do you need? We shouldn't just assume that they need something, right? Like, we should be like, hey, what do you need particularly? That way we can know, do we buy wholesale or do we just donate, you know, monetary funds that way?
I think regardless of the fact, once, you know, we, we figure this part out, but it'd be great to have that list just going forward, because I know a lot of times people in the community just randomly ask us, where are these food banks of distribution, because they are not aware, they don't see them, or they stay in their own little quarters, and then we're trying to remember where they are. This would be helpful for us as the community is here and just council to be able to continue to disseminate the information as well as direct them to the website if needed.
We can do that, we'll create a list, put it up the rec center, put it here at City Hall, the counter, put it on social media, we can probably get that together tomorrow. And we'll start with that, and then we will, you guys want to try to do it out of our pocket, get through November and December?
Let's do that. And I think the donation idea is a good idea, like, maybe, I don't know if we want to do a competition, but like, each, at least each district has their specific, like, building that, you know, they utilize or whatever, so even if, like, you know, each people, we don't want everybody traveling, not everybody can get all over the city, you know what I mean? So then we have specific distributions within districts where people can go and get their food or.
We'll have to find that space.
Figure out transportation or something like that.
We have to pull in AIA some of the community churches or the schools if we're gonna do that.
I think, I think definitely the donations, doing that first, would be beneficial before we start talking about we're gonna use government funds. That requires, I think, looking at the budget, because essentially, we're talking about spending money we really don't have, correct?
If we have the list. If we establish a list like you were talking about, and they already ordered the government to start up those benefits, even though he's saying he's gonna do half, but if we have a list, and one thing about it, you also have an issue, is that you have people crossing over, because you have people from Inkster that really go to Romulus. I mean, they, they're traveling everywhere, but I think it would be who of us to get a list to see what's available right now.
Yeah, I think we're gonna do that tomorrow.
See if he moves quickly, which I don't.
I mean, I'm hoping this ends in next week or two.
Yeah, because he's already ordered that he's supposed to start those benefits back up, but I don't know that.
I don't know if he's gonna follow though.
No argument from me.
I'm not sure.
Try, right, right.
I hope so, I mean.
I do too. I do too, but if we can start with the list and the dates that these, they can go to distribution places, so that we don't, like you're saying, we don't cross each one, I think, that would be a start.
That'd work.
So, what are we doing so this, like, doesn't really get, like, lost in the sauce? Do we, like, have to, like, I don't know, committee or, like, I don't know, like, how do we move forward, I guess?
I tell you what, we'll be the committee, but we can, we'll pull the community leaders together, and then whoever can make it can make it.
Okay.
We'll get the list and stuff done tomorrow, we'll get that out, and then we'll touch base with all the pantries and stuff, and, you know, if this lags, we'll figure out, what do y'all need, what can we do?
Okay.
Anybody else want to speak to this? Well, that's our excitement for tonight. Okay. We don't have any public hearings. Consent agenda.
Some will.
No second.
They probably moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Our pastors. Boards and commissions. I'd like to nominate Yvonne Moore to be reappointed to the Housing Commission.
Second.
I need somebody.
Sorry, some moved.
Support.
Probably moved and supported, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Our pastors. Any other nominations? Are we set with Parks and Rec Commission now?
Probably need one or two. Still need my district, I haven't, I called the.
Three and five.
I'm gonna have to try to get back in touch with him.
If, if he doesn't do it, she says she has someone, can you do that?
Yeah, you can nominate whoever you want to, it doesn't matter where they live.
Yes.
Okay, so let me, I'll call you tomorrow.
Okay. I have a nomination in the next.
Next meeting, okay. We don't have any ordinances, first or second reading? We have nothing on the new business, so we'll go straight to public participation. Michael Green. Good evening.
First off, I want to thank Mayor and Council for last time we appeared here on behalf of American Legion to give us an opportunity to recognize some of the citizens for the Vietnam 50th anniversary pen. Let me keep this real brief. Oh, clock isn't running? Oh, there it is. So, earlier today, I had dropped off a package to, for each council member and the mayor, and one for the clerk. This is the thing. Mayor has been very supportive in trying to get the American Legion reestablished in the city of Inkster. That hasn't happened yet. We need 15 veterans to step up to get the charter reestablished so we could put Inkster back in, in the, in the fold of the state. Couple years ago, Inkster lost its charter because they couldn't maintain 15 members. So, at the state convention, they revoked it or rescinded their charter. So, why is it important to have an American Legion in the city of Inkster for this kind of very thing that's going on right now? If you had an American Legion, they could support the community. That's one of the functions of the American Legion, is to support the community. The American Legion also has so many programs, and the reason why I'm here tonight is to touch on them. In that package, the first program that's coming up, there's a deadline of December, December 5th, and, give him a glass cup. So, December 5th is the deadline for the oratorical contest, and the oratorical contest is this. Everyone up here is city government, right? If you were to mentor someone, they could be part of oratorical that could get them a scholarship, okay? It's, they have to present on the constitution, and with everything that's going on now, it's good to know what the constitution says, right? So, that's something that kids could participate in and win scholarships for. I'm gonna keep it real brief. The other thing, the second one is Southern Columbia Southern University. This is something new that the American Legion is doing, is if you look at the information, well, actually, it's a whole list here of all the scholarships and different names of the scholarships, but Southern Columbia Southern University has a scholarship for people that want to do trades. You have construction, building, automotive, advanced manufacturing, just a whole list, energy careers. These are things that if you're not gonna go to college, these kids could get involved And then, it's a whole list. We have scholarships that's coming up that the state of Michigan is giving out to these kids, they just need to apply. Some of them, some of them requires that you be a descendant of a veteran, some of them you don't, you just need to apply. And when talked about descendants, it doesn't have to be your immediate parents, it could be your grandparents, it could be your great-grandparents. You go all the way back to, well, can't do a civil war, because that was before the American Legion was formed, but you could go back to World War I and II. If you have someone, you're a descendant of someone, and if you need help getting their military records, contact me, we could do that. That's what we do. The other thing in that package is an application for veterans or their spouses that need home improvements, things that they can apply for to help renovate their homes if they have something that, you got a furnace going out, winter's coming, it's stuff like that, you got a roof caving, whatever, they could do that. Actually, the next two forms is about that, I'm gonna keep it real brief here. The last form is something that aid and attendance. If you have a veteran in the community that someone is taking care of, they can actually get paid from the VA to aid that veteran in their everyday life. It could go anywhere, what's the minimum? It could go anywhere from $1,500, $15 up to $3,740 a month, that they will pay someone to take care of a veteran, depends on the needs. If you're covering two of their needs, you cooking and cleaning for them, that's two right there. And it doesn't have to be, it could be your spouse. If your spouse, people say better for worse, but if your spouse is cooking and cleaning, you're a veteran, that person could be entitled to some aid and attendance benefits. Now, I'm gonna say this, and let me give you this information. Also in there is my card, so if any of your constituents need more information, I'm gonna say this, if you go to American Legion Department of Michigan, that's American Legion Department of Michigan, just Google that, you could get to the website for the American Legion for the state of Michigan. On your dropdown boxes, there's one called Programs. If you click on Programs, it will give you a list of all the programs that the American Legion sponsors, right? I've already given Police Chief, Fire Chief, Officer of the Year, Firefighter Year, I think EMT falls in that one, Teacher of the Year. Now, I'm gonna say this. I had to look around, it doesn't matter, but I'm just gonna keep it real. I went to a seminar in Eaton Rapids, I was the darkest thing there.
And you're not that dark.
I didn't bring much color to the program. And it was in the wintertime, I didn't even have on my summer coat. The thing is, Commander Nichols and I, you met Commander Nichols last time, we want to have children that represent the makeup of the state, and too often, we are missing children to do that, because the parents don't know about it, the teachers aren't passing on, and that's why it's important for an American Legion, the information I'm giving you is information that the local American Legion will give you. If you're part of it, not only just the veterans, once we get the American Legion reestablished, Mayor, you could be part of the sons of the American Legion, you're a descendant, any spouses could be part of the American Legion. It used to be ladies auxiliary, now it's just called auxiliary, because we have men that are spouses of veterans that's joining now, so it's just auxiliary. The thing is, it's so much out there that could help the community, and that's what we're trying to do, get all this information out, get the community back on track, we're gonna support whatever, we get the posts going, we're gonna support you to get it going right and to make sure that the community is, is doing everything it's supposed to do in the community. We have a list of things that we're required to do in the community in which we represent, and that's only gonna benefit the, the city and the citizens in the city. So, if we could get it going, again, my, my email, I have cards on me, if anyone wants one. If you have problems getting your DD 214, let me know, I'll find it for you. But my email is MPM, like Mary Paul Mary, my last name Green, G R E E N E, and number 2D, as in David, at gmail dot com. My phone number, I'll give it to you. Again, that's 734-678-4949. So, with that being said, I'm not gonna take up much of your time, but I want to add one other thing off. Oh, one of the programs in there, Ms. Rutledge? Police chief? One of the programs in there is student trooper. We didn't have anyone for student trooper last year. So, student trooper is a program that any kids, they, MSP take the kids, I think they keep them for a week, you need a break, send your kids. Anyway, they keep them, they teach them all about law enforcement. So, we need someone from Washington County, definitely need someone from Wayne County. Boy State, Girl State. Boy State and Girl State is a program that any kids want to go into politics. We will, if you get them to sign up, we will provide the money for them. It's like 400, I think it's, it keeps going up, it might be about $450 per kid to send to Boy State and Girl State. We will find the money, we have posts with money, they don't have the kids to send. That's the problem. We have scholarships, every year we have leftover money, nobody's applying, and, you know, each, and the ones that do don't represent the makeup of the state, if you understand what I'm saying. So, we need more, and we need your assistance in getting it done. But if you have any questions or want to know about the programs or need assistance with it, let me know, and I'm here tonight because, as I said, the one, you gotta get the application in before December 5th, I think it is, the other programs will come into play, deadlines are after the first of the year. So, we're getting ready for the summer, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, Mr. Mayor and Council, I want to also thank Police Chief, Fire Chief, for incidents this week that you guys handled very well professionally in keeping the citizens of Inkster safe. Thank you.
Maureen Moynihan.
You're getting good.
She's a regular.
Hello.
Hello.
Um, question, I, some meeting ago, they, there were, the garbage man was here and he said, if there's any complaints. The garbage man dumped my neighbor's garbage can six weeks ago, and they're still waiting for a new one. He said they're waiting for parts.
You say dumped it, you mean broke it?
They broke it, yeah. Is there anything or any place I can call or we can call for them?
Your own business.
Second question, I'll get to you. Ordinance, I'm just looking for some information on ordinance. I filed a complaint, and the guy called me and said they had to go to court, okay, so he said it'd take a couple months or whatever, and I said, okay. And I saw them working in the yard, and then they just stopped, and I called again and asked, what's the, what's going on? Give me some status. And he said to me, I can't go into the yard, and I said, well, how do you know it's even complete, or how do you know even was a problem? So, I'm kind of lost, if I file a complaint or someone files a complaint, they say they can't go in and check it?
Well, they, we can't just, like, trespass on people's property.
Well, how do you go in to say it's even a problem? Maybe I'm just lying.
No, 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 well, you, you gotta put some eyeballs on or use your drone, or however you gotta do it, but you write, the court enforcement has to write a ticket, then it goes to court, then the, the judge will resolve it one way or the other. So, we can't, you know, we can't just run in people's backyards and.
So, how do I know if it's, well, I didn't think it was completed, and I just asked for a status, and I got nothing, no answers.
So, if it was, if, if the complaint is going to court, that's the?
The court was already, it was, that was done, and they had started the work, and then they stopped.
So, the neighbor started some work in their backyard?
Yes.
And then they stopped doing the work in the backyard?
Right, and I thought, I knew it wasn't complete, so I called the number to say, what's the status of this, and the person who said, I can't go into their yard.
So, you think maybe the judge probably told them that they had to cease the work or stop doing.
I don't, I don't know, that was, I didn't, I didn't get a good answer when I called.
Okay, just give me the information and I'll find out for it.
I just wonder what you're supposed to do in those kind of cases.
You can give me the information.
Okay, that's all.
All right, thank you.
And I'll get with you, Mr. Bivins, after the meeting. Thank you.
All right. Xavier Smith.
Greetings, Mayor, Council, and residents. Just bringing you greetings from the Inglewood Chamber of Commerce, just to let you know a few of the things that we do have coming up. We are in the last two months of the year, so we do have two more workshops that are free of charge for the citizens, especially those who are looking to open up a new business, or if you have a small business and you just need some help to run your business. Sorry, my phone is acting a little extra, so I'm trying to get this so I can read it off. But Monday, this coming Monday, November the tenth, the workshop is Using AI for Small Business. So most of, all of us know the AI is here, so you can learn simple, easy techniques to use ChatGPT, Gemini, and all those other things that AI uses. And once you attend this free workshop, you also will receive an AI for Business Toolkit free. So this will be in Monday at the Inglewood Chamber of Office, Inglewood Chamber of Commerce office, from three o'clock to five o'clock. We changed the time because it gets dark so early in the fall and we don't want people to be out so late. And you can park right next door to the chamber office, which is at two six seven one seven Michigan Avenue, next to Sicko Gas Station. There's a little, the accounting building right there that allow us to use the parking areas. You can park right there, so it's easy to get to. We also have put out already this My Small Business Helper, which is a small business helper for anyone who's in business. Again, on your business, you are looking to have a business. All of these are all free resources where you can get grants, you can get loans, or whatever you need to do to keep your business going. So we've been here for a long time, and we wanna make sure that people who are in small business, who want to open a business, have an opportunity to know what is available to you. You know, some people may be struggling with their small business, but we have so many tools that you can learn free of charge. So you can always go to www.inglewoodchamber and you can see the information on our website, or you can always call me. I'm, most of the people in the city have my phone number is three one three four seven eight three zero four zero, or the chamber office, which is three one three three hundred one zero five seven. Any questions? Anyone? Well, thank you all for listening, and we hope to see you all soon. Take care.
Gabe Henderson.
Hello, Mayor and Council, and my wonderful family. I'm here for the, first of all, again, I wanna say, you know, to keep out, in prayers for Barbara Cooper, Willie, Willie Cooper husband. You know, he's having some serious difficulty, so pray for him, you know, and, and hope he'll be around much, much, much longer upon this earth, you know, so. Such a great guy, so let's put him in our prayers. Okay, Inglewood Goodfellas. We getting pretty close to the, the deadlines of, you know, of raising money for the kids for Christmas. One of our main is the newspaper ads we put in our booklet and all that. So I think Barbara probably approached all the council people about if they wanna put their business card in and so forth, so just hoping that. And, you know, I was just thinking that what the mayor was talking about, different organizations, maybe we can look into some way that we, of course, the Goodfellas. Normally, you know, we give gift certificates, we give toys and all that. And the most important thing, I think, anytime, you know, is to get our bellies full. You know, to keep us from, you know, ability to do things. So we might be looking to some, I had talked with Barbara, you know, about that, you know, maybe we can make some adjustments in our, in our funds, you know, to help fires food. I think she, she'll go for that. But anyway, Inglewood Goodfellas, I wanna thank y'all again for, you know, those who helped us in our pancake breakfast and all that. And with that, hmm, that's about all I have to say. Yep. And, uh, the extras, you got some of the ads, you know, they could look at it and see what they might, you know, even though, I know we're talking about the business, you know, but if you wanted to ask some, uh, do some extra, I didn't know anybody who wanna put ads in. Of course, it's a different business. We, we approach the businesses, you know, through our ad campaign. So, with that, I don't have anything else to say, but I love y'all. And, you know, guy, guys, they say, man, they say, hey, Gabe, you know, they say, they say, no, they ask me my name. They say, what's your name? I said, my name, I'm Mr. Brown, the, the neighborhood clown. Anyway, no, he asked me and I said, Mr. Brown. He said, Mr. Brown. I said, yeah, Mr. Brown, the neighborhood clown. But anyway, I love y'all. Really gotta ask me. Okay.
Arnold Watkins.
Hi, Mayor, Council. I'm back again about that yard behind us. Come on, my mom's ninety-five. She, she's killing me. She killing me. I was gonna bring her up here today, but she been here all night with you. But would you please come look at that yard? And now somebody else bought the, I think somebody, somebody working over there, but it's still not, it haven't been cut in a year. I mean, she came and looked out her back door. You know, we keep our yard up, we, you know, she came sit in the backyard. She came, she had a backyard. We, we, we railed around it. I mean, the raccoon stuff coming up to the screen door, you know, asking what we eating, you know, and then...
What's the address?
Huh?
What's the address?
And what, what, what's the address?
What's the address?
Two six one seven one Penn, P E N N. And, uh, our code enforcement, she's doing an excellent job. You know, she been over there on, on quite a few, few times. But now I think there's some new owners, so, you know, we just asked her, like I say, we end up building a patio on the side so she can look down Penn. They coming up there now. So I just, you know, just want somebody, and then I'm gonna ask one more question about the water bill. You know, I, quite, quite a few people wanna ask about it, but ain't nobody asking, so I'm gonna mention it, the water bill.
Oh, they asking.
Oh, they asking, okay. And I just wanna know, you know, is it straight? Do, that's what it's supposed to be? Is, you know, what's going on with it?
You mean in general?
In general.
Well, we had, what, eight hundred accounts, I think, received inaccurate water bills out of the nine thousand.
Okay.
So I can't say, it's, I, I don't know. It depends on each per, each...
Okay, what, what, what I'm trying to say is what's on there, we pay it, and we paying too much, what we gonna do?
If, if it's, if it's an enormous bill, much more than you normally pay, just hold on, don't pay it. We're fixing the accounts that are inaccurate, and we'll be sending out an accurate bill to you.
You say don't pay it?
Don't pay it. Well, you have December thirty first to pay any bills from, what did it say, from August?
Two six one seven...
July.
July. You have all the way to December thirty first, from July to December.
Okay, can I turn my phone on and let my wife hear that? Cause she on me, I mean...
Well, you know, you can bring, always bring your bill up to talk to one of the cashiers. We can see, maybe your bill's accurate. I don't know.
Oh, okay.
I was looking at it.
Okay, I just wanted to mention it, and I thank y'all for listening, and please, 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 help my moms. Cause y'all help her, y'all helping me.
We're gonna check it out.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. Michael Kelly.
How's everybody doing this evening? Dave Van. Mayor, Council, just wanted to do a little bonketeer update of what's been going on. We've had a tremendous year, and it hasn't ended. Uh, just wanted to let everybody know for the month of November, we'll be performing halftime at the Pistons game, November fourteenth. That's a big thing. We just trying to figure out what we gonna wear tonight, you know what I'm saying? And then, uh, the next, the following weekend at Ford Field for the Hobnabo event, whatever you call that thing, uh, but that's another event that we'll be dancing at, the, uh, the twenty-first of November. And we're blessed to have that one as well. And then Thanksgiving Day, they've invited us to dance WDIV has on the parade. It's gonna have something... The live, the live thing. We're not gonna be dancing during the parade. At nine o'clock, we have to be there at six AM, so at nine o'clock, they're setting something out on the street and we're gonna get out.
Oh, great.
So, uh, yeah. Everybody informed because we are Inglewood's bonketeers.
All right, all right.
Everywhere we go, we represent, all right?
Madam Clerk.
Um, just gearing up for election tomorrow, two one two two four one four two six one six two. Everything is going good so far, and I will be back in here at five fifteen AM.
All right.
All right.
Can you see anything?
Yes, and public comment I received from Mr. Charles Blackwell. It has been communicated through to Mayor and Council, and it will be put in the meeting minutes.
All right. Mr. Treasurer. Oh, no comments, okay. Mayor and Council, Councilwoman Scott.
Nothing at this time.
Councilman Bishop.
No comments.
Councilwoman Roberts.
No comment, Mayor.
Councilwoman Richardson.
No, I'ma talk.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just, just a reminder about the Goodfellas that Gabe was talking about. The deadline has been extended. It says on the application, October thirty-first, for you to take an ad out, but it is extended until November fourteenth.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so we'll take your money anytime. Also, just a comment, Mr. To Michael Green. Appreciate all the information that you're giving out, but I did have one question. A couple of months ago, there was a young lady that came before council, and she had presented us with a packet in which it's like they have in Garden City. They, they have along Ford Road pictures of their veterans along there. And we never heard anything else from her. Is that a project that we can do?
Absolutely. I don't know who the young lady was.
I had the information at home. I can call you.
That would be, that would be nice to identify veterans in the city and do that.
Is that free?
Which company does it?
Okay, well, we gonna talk.
Okay.
Cause I would like to see that done. I think it would help beautify Michigan Avenue a little bit. Thank you for that. Um, also wanna thank Mr. McDaniel during the Inglewood Goodfellow Breakfast. He was in there and he was cleaning and doing everything he can to make everything okay. Thank you. We just appreciate you putting forth the effort. Even yesterday was at a event, and he was there doing his thing, making sure everything is clean. And I just want you to know, job well done. Thank you so much. To my police department, I wanna thank them. Had a little problem in my yard, and I called them, and they were right there, chink chink. And got him, and, you know, it's just good to know that if you call them and you having any kind of problems or issues, they're right on the spot. They came out, I think it was like two o'clock in the morning, and then I got a call at my house from the chief. They didn't woke her up out of her sleep. And I wasn't expecting that to make sure I was okay. I was fine, thank you. They asked me did I have a weapon. No, I didn't, but maybe I need to get one. But I really appreciate the attention and, yes, and all the things that you guys do for the city. We don't, we don't pay you enough. We really don't, but we appreciate all the efforts that you put forth to protect the citizens. Thank you for a job well done. My fire department. Get my right hand, I tell you. That no good Jim booger keep getting sick on me over there. He did, but, yeah, sweet booger, whatever you wanna call him. But thank you for coming and handling that situation. My husband had been under the weather. He's been fighting various things. My husband is a nine-time cancer survivor. He is. He's, he's the bonding man for real. When I, when we get into a blind, I called the, the fire department, and they're right there, delivering help and hand. And I just wanna thank you guys for being attentive, and I know that you have that love, that passion, I could tell, from you to all the people that work with, under you. You still have that. Thank you for serving our community. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilwoman Howard.
Okay, um, I'd like to thank DPS Department. They're working on our street on Princess on the side. And, um... Anyway, the water is gonna be shut off, and they sent, they put a note on everybody's doors, which was thankful. Then something happened, whatever. We had a boil alert. Well, before I got home, it was two cases of water on all of our, our doors, our steps. So I just wanna thank Jerome and your department for doing an excellent job. And when people say you don't do that, they don't notify, they even came back and put a note on our door to say the drinking water was good. So I just wanna thank your department for doing a good job. That's all I have.
Mayor Protop.
Thank you. Uh, just, I had attended the Halloween party put on by the PD. It was grand. I'd like to say thank you to you all for that. And all the other entities that put on the celebration for the children as well, like DPS and Inglewood businesses. I also attended the Michigan Planet Conference twenty twenty-five in Kalamazoo, Michigan. It was a three-day conference where myself, Mr. Derek Dowdell, and other planning commissioners networked, learned a lot. Uh, it's kinda like continuing education. A lot of times we get on boards and commissions, and then that's it. We don't expand outside of the meeting that takes place here or in, at the rec. And so that was I opened it to learn what the rest of the commissioners all over the state of Michigan are doing. Seen a lot of different, uh, big planning departments like, um, uh, you know, what's the, the different planning entities that we deal with throughout the different commi- communities. Um, so that was just educational and informative. Also attended the Garda Fresh Market walkthrough with the mayor this past weekend. I'll let him expand on that. That's just another grocery option, which is in addition to Food Max and our African slash Caribbean market. This one is at Cherry Hill and Henry Ruff. It is open. A couple of people, when I told them I went, they said, oh, we didn't even know it was open. My mom was one of them. I said, it's cause you got tunnel vision. You get on Cherry Hill, you just drive. You see the signs go up, you ask us what it is, and you never actually go in and patronize. And I have that same thing too, so I just encourage you to be more investigative and take a look. The org, when Mr. Green spoke about the American Legion and the Oratorical Judges event, I actually attended when I was a judge one time. I just wanna encourage you all to keep the young ones involved. It is a great program. I was amazed at the gifts and the talents that the young folks possessed, and when he talked about the Constitution, they don't just get up there and ramble about it. They can recite it verbatim. If it's the full thing, if it's just certain portions of it, and then they should get up there and they debate as well, and you would think they're running for office the way that they debate. And you ready to cast a vote, but you can't vote for them in that capacity. But it is really something of how their minds work and how they just are able to retain that information. And even just dressing the part. Nobody is out of place. They dress like professionals, and you, it, it just encourages me like, wow. I wish I could have been doing that at that particular age, but hey, everything happens for a reason. And I just wanna encourage everybody to stay involved with your local elections, like the clerk said, like the city clerk said. There's an election tomorrow, and regardless of how major or minor you may feel it is, please cast your vote.
Well, last Friday, you know, we had a bit of a scare. Uh, we were on the news. They were talking about a terror plot was thwarted. And Inglewood's name popped up because they searched a U-Haul storage facility in Inglewood and found some weapons, I guess. It's all out now. We're getting a little bit more information out Friday. There's not a lot of information flowing. I was a little concerned because we had four Halloween events that night, and, you know, that would not be good, you know? Something bad happened to our kids and our community, so I guess we found out today that I think the target was Ferndale. Um, and, you know, they charged two of the, uh, men, young men who were arrested. So we're still getting a little bit more information on that, but Police Chief did a great job, um, trying to get us some information because the feds wouldn't, they were not giving out a lot of information, and we're trying to make sure everybody was safe. So we started that Friday, and that went all Friday day, you know, it was a long day for us. Then we went to the Halloween events, and they turned out great. Stardust, I think, did one. The Inglewood Cobras did one at the old Inglewood High. Where else we go? Inglewood Housing had a party for the kids, and then Brother Smokehouse at the Trunk and Treat. Uh, so all of them were well attended. I think the kids got a lot of candy because all the kids went to all the parties, so, uh, you know, it was a good time, but... So, I loved the special event, so looking forward to the holidays and Thanksgiving. We are gonna serve hot meals. Inglewood Task Force and Inglewood Cobras are gonna sell hot meals on Thanksgiving Day. We'll deliver, so you can put your orders. Giving them away, giving them away. Oh, no. Oh, I said, sir? All free. We getting in the kitchen and cooking, and, uh, we're gonna give away those dinners on Thanksgiving. All free, we getting in the kitchen and cooking, and we're gonna give away those dinners on Thanksgiving. If you need one delivered, just contact one of the Cobras or one of the members of Inglewood Task Force. We'll make sure you get your meal. So we'll cook for y'all before we cook for our own families. So we want everybody to make sure they eat and enjoy the holidays. We're gonna be at the Complex Cooking, but we'll deliver, or you can come pick them up and take them home and eat them. Okay, so spread the word, everybody needs any food, and we will try to solve the other food issues as they come up. And that's all I have. Time, we're gonna be delivering eleven, twelve early in the day, so we can get to our families in the afternoon, so. We'll be done by noon, I think, we usually done by noon. Drinking eggnog and other stuff by then. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Second.
Probably move to second, discussion. All those in favor say aye. Who say nay? Have a good night.
The one that wanna stay?
You have to take some alcohol, make eight nine.
What you make?
Madam Clerk.
It's rich, but you know it's gonna rain.
Jalen.
I can do you right now.
I love it.